Welcome to the Board of Education Regular Meeting, December 14th, 2020. Governor Pritzker recently extended the disaster declaration related to COVID-19 pandemic for all Illinois counties and extended the ability of public bodies to hold virtual meetings to December 13th, 2020. In accordance with the Open Meetings Act, based on the current public health concerns, the Board of Education of Evanston Township High School District 202, as head of the public body, has determined that it is neither practical nor prudent to hold an in-person meeting of the Board of Education on December 14th, 2020. The Board President has further determined that it is not feasible for the public or for a representative of the Board to be present at the meeting location due to the health concerns related to COVID-19. So can we have a roll call, please?
Law Day.
Here.
Livingston.
Oops. I have to unmute, don't I? Oh, no, I am unmuted here.
Mansell.
Here.
Harsons.
Here.
Rollowoods.
Here.
Teterich.
Here.
Savage Williams.
Here. Thank you. So the first item on our agenda is written communication. Do we have any written communication, Dr. Beavis?
We have no written communication this evening.
Okay, great. Okay, the next items on the agenda are around our press policy. It's our first reading of press policy issue number 106. We had a policy meeting last week, right?
That's right.
Was it this week? Recently, we had a press, we had a policy meeting. So any discussion or questions about that? It's our first reading. All right. So the next item on the agenda is an update on e-learning. So Dr. Witherspoon.
Yes, hi. Good evening, Board. Yes, Dr. Beavis and Dr. Campbell and I are all going to add a little bit to this update. It's not a long update, but, but, but clearly we will want to respond to any questions you may have at this point. As you know, we did announce recently that we will start second semester on remote learning. I actually don't know of any high school in the area that is planning any differently than that to start the first semester on remote learning. The reason, I think, is pretty simple. We, we, we are seeing the dire predictions for following the winter holidays, and we also know that, that right now, the predictions on the virus are really dire. And we're just not in a position with everything that is being and is happening. In fact, I, it is just tragic to talk about over 3,000 Americans are dying every day now, and over 300,000 Americans, you know, we've now reached that milestone have died. And it's predicted that over 400,000 Americans will have died by the time President Biden is inaugurated. You know, three weeks into our new semester. It's, it, it is truly a national and a human tragedy. But there's just simply no projecting right now that it would be safe at the beginning of first semester, which starts, by the way, January 4th, for us to be the only high school in the entire area trying to open up at that point. So we are indeed going to be closed at that point. I anticipate that we would certainly be closed for the month of January, not closed, I'm using the wrong terminology. We would be on remote learning for the, for the month of January. And, you know, I can't see anything better in the month of January. We are hoping, however, that we would be able sometime second semester to get, to get our hybrid plan underway. And you, of course, have seen our hybrid plan, and, and it is posted on our website. It is still the same plan, but, you know, we are utilizing this time period and have been utilizing it to learn a lot about hybrid plans and to really be, be determined that if we are able to get to hybrid second semester, as we hope, that, that we would be able to go from all of that learning and, and really have as successful as possible, at least on that. So that's where we are right now. We will obviously continue monitoring carefully. We have pledged to the community, to the parents who would have to make arrangements and, and to staff members, that we would give a 30, would and will give a 30-day notice when, when our situation changes from completely remote to a hybrid and, and allow for that. But I, what I'd like to do now is have Pete, Dr. Beavis, talk a little bit about the learnings that we have and, and, and not only currently, but, but as we anticipate up the road at some point, the possibility of then having the hybrid. And then I'm going to ask Marcus, Dr. Campbell, if he would talk a little bit about what we have been learning and what we have been addressing in this interim period as well as what we would still have time to do in those weeks early in the semester as, as we monitor the, the pandemic carefully. So Pete, I'll turn this over to you.
Thanks, Dr. Witherspoon. You know, from an instructional perspective, we all know and agree that the most effective instructional model overall is fully in person. I want us to hold that out there because that's what we, we used to do it all the time, and now we aspire to it, okay? That's the goal here, is full in-person instruction. It works. Now, here's what we know from districts that have moved to hybrid. We know, and we have learned from them, that the second most effective instructional model is fully remote. We've learned that from places that have gone hybrid, that the second most effective is fully remote. Now, we also know from districts that have opened up that the most effective model within the hybrid model is something called remote in-person instruction. Let me tell you what that means. That means that students come into the classroom, they socially distance, and then they zoom during class time with their peers who are remote. Okay, that's the most effective hybrid model out there. Now, I want to acknowledge that there is some value to bringing students into the building socially in the hybrid classroom. But remember this, we're bringing students in, in that model, to keep them apart. In addition, you know, there appears to be an instructional trade-off for teachers given the split attention required to teach those in front of us, even if they're doing it remotely, right? You got the Zoom going with the kids in front of you and paying attention to the kids who are remote at that time. So it's a real challenging instructional situation. We're going to file those under Lessons Learned. All that is going to inform our planning going forward, and we keep our eyes and ears open. We are in contact with our peers in other districts to find out what works best. But right now, that's what we know, and that's what we're going to start preparing for. We actually previewed this in the summer when we said if we brought kids in, they would be socially distanced and they would zoom while the teacher zoomed with everybody. So that hasn't changed, and in fact, that's been validated. But please keep in mind that that is the third best option available to us, and I just want to make us aware of the trade-offs instructionally. Later tonight, you're going to hear about our AP report, where students took the AP exam at the end of May, essentially at the end of fourth quarter, which was fully, and that was crisis instruction, but we'll have a gauge on how well kids did in that. And that's actually the only assessment we have that can speak to that. And we'll talk about that. I don't want to spoil it for anybody, but please stay tuned. It's a really great report, and I'll be giving that with my friend and, and Department Chair Dale Leadforth, who also heads up our AP effort. So that's what I have instructionally for us. We're going to wrap our heads around this, you know, but I just ask that we take those expectations that would be present in a fully in-person model, and we lower those to a hybrid model. It's not going to be the same. It's not going to be as effective. We need to know that going in. So that's my update, Dr. Witherspoon, and I think Dr. Campbell will provide us on how we're getting ready to bring everybody in. But I just wanted to put that out there for everybody.
Thank you, Dr. Beavis, Dr. Witherspoon, and good evening, Board. Once we get to a hybrid plan, I'm going to share a little bit of some of the planning that we have already done to make this possible. We spent our summer planning for a remote scenario, a fully remote scenario, and a, and a hybrid scenario. So we've been able to fairly execute these plans rather well, I think, knock on wood. And we've certainly been working hard to do that, and I'm very proud of the work that we've done. But as Pete mentioned, that our hybrid, the hybrid model is really, although kids will be coming to the building, it's not bringing kids together, it's still keeping them apart because we'll still be in the pandemic. But one of the things we have, a few items I'm going to go with over tonight, highlight some of the planning that we've already done to unfortunately continue to keep kids apart. And that is, as well as sanitize and work at the, the air quality, some of those recommendations that we've gotten from the Illinois Department of Public Health and ISBE. And one, that is, we have, are making sure that we continue to sanitize our multiple touchpoint areas, our high-touchpoint areas throughout the building, that's doors and doorknobs and, and handles and things like that. They will be done multiple times a day. We've set up our classrooms currently to be, all of the desks are six feet apart, and we've taken those additional desks and have removed them and put them in cafeterias and gyms because we know that we'll be needing to have those there for that. We have changed all of our HVAC filters to the recommended IDPH MERV filters, which are for viruses like COVID-19, and we've, we've done that. There are some of our, our fans are a little old, and so we're having those retrofitted as we speak. We often balance, also balance our system with the intake of, of outside air, but as the weather gets cold, we have to make sure that we don't freeze up our HVAC system. So that is monitored by our engineers daily. We're also cleaning fans and doing all of those necessary updates and monitoring while we, you know, continue to just make sure that our, our air quality is, it's what it, it's what it needs to be. We are also making sure that we are following the IDPH protocols for indoor music, singing, and dance class for air replacement. We're encouraging staff to keep open windows where possible. And, you know, we're in an old building, we have a lot of classrooms and offices that don't have windows, but every office and every classroom does have a supply and have a return of air, and they go, they go through that, that, that filter, that HVAC MERV 13 filter. We're providing PPE where necessary, masks are required, will be required, and staff and students will be expected to wear a mask in school during the day. We're installing Plexiglas. You can see a lot of our public service areas, a lot of areas where we service our students and staff, they've already, our operations department has already installed Plexiglas. We will have one-way hallways, and where we can't do that, we're going to have cones and flags to keep the direction going in one direction so that there is no opportunity to, to, for crossing paths. We are buying a ton of hand sanitizer and other things to make sure that teachers have hand sanitizer and disinfectants throughout the school. We're adding pump stations to hallways so that that's easily accessible. And as I mentioned, providing trifle Plexiglas stations for classrooms. We're investing in a bunch of signage that says stay six feet apart, walk here, stand here, keep moving, those kinds of directions, and it's been quite the undertaking for our operations team. I'm happy to report too, still, as I've mentioned, that we have already worked on our classrooms and our common areas and things like that, and we still have a ways to go. We've been mitching with various, meeting with various stakeholder groups like our union, just to keep them abreast of these kinds of things, and they've had questions, and we've been able to address those questions. And so we're in the thick of our planning for our, our hybrid model when we get there, and these are just some of the precautions that we've already taken to make sure that we are set and ready to go. Eric?
You're muted, Eric. Well, we'll take care of each other on this. Thank you. The, the other thing that I just want to reiterate is, this is really about lives and safety. And you may recall that the governor has established different COVID regions around the state. We are in Region 10, and the governor's office and IDPH have indicated that any region that, that exceeds an 8% positivity rate needs, needs much more forceful mitigation. And that's exactly what's been happening in our region. Actually, it's happening statewide right now. I believe, if I'm correct, I believe the whole state exceeds 8% at, at the moment. I do know that Region 10 is hovering at around 13%. It was 12.8% in the most recent day that was published. So clearly, we are, are in what IDPH and the governor's office consider a serious situation, needing mitigation efforts. But we will continue to monitor that closely. Right now, I'm, you know, I don't know anything more than, than all the rest of us know by information that's published, but I, I, I think that we would be very fortunate if in the month of January, it got back down to 8% or lower. Everything that they're predicting sounds way more frightening than that. But, you know, we'll hope that everybody wears a mask and everybody avoids travel during, during the holidays, and everybody keeps social distancing and hand washing going on, and that through all of our good behavior, that, that Region 10 can defy the predictions and, and, and do better than what we're seeing right now, or better than what's predicted, which, which could be much worse, you know, following the, the upcoming holidays. But I just wanted to repeat something that, that is important and at top of mind all the time. We're not going to play around with lives. And as much as we want to wish this to be different, we're going to pay attention to the, the dynamics, the science, the, the data that we're getting, and we will be prepared. And, and, and as soon as the situation improves, we will be ready to go with, with a hybrid. And that concludes our report.
Thank you. Thank you, Dr. Beavis, Dr. Campbell, Dr. Witherspoon. Board, any comments or questions from anybody? So I just want to say that I really appreciate the report. Dr. Beavis, I appreciate you starting by saying, you know, we know how to teach students, we know how to work with them, we know what's best, and just breaking it down for us like that. I know firsthand how complicated this is, and, and when we start bringing students in, this model can be very, very complicated. There are so many details. So thank you for thinking ahead and being proactive and, and not messing around with people's lives. I think that's really important. All right.
Can I, can I just ask a question?
Of course.
I am curious as to whether or not we have plans, in addition to all the great communication and work that you've been doing already, do we have plans to communicate out to the community what some of these trigger points are, you know, points when things will change? I think that the feedback I've gotten in some places from parents and families is, is a question about what measurements are we using to make decisions? And how do we, how do we get more specific and detailed about what, what those, what that data is that we need in order to make particular decisions? And, and are there, you know, is this an opportunity for us in the next month or so to maybe communicate out or to be more visible with some of that information in terms of, you know, yes, there's a lot we don't know, and there's a lot that doesn't, that looks very dire on the horizon? I think it would be to the benefit of you all doing such great planning and sorting out, you know, all of these details, which are enormous, to be able to communicate that in more specific ways, what, what some of that looks like. Otherwise, I think people are imagining and wondering what's going on behind the scenes, and I think it would be to your benefit if you could, if you could communicate that, what is going on behind the scenes in, in the situation of not knowing what's going, going on in the future? So.
Yeah, we, we, as, as things develop and, and as we see more indicators that are maybe pointing the right direction or the wrong direction, we, we will be very much communicating that so that it's pretty clear, you know, hey, it looks like it's heading in a better direction, and here are the things we're seeing. A, it looks like it's heading in a worse direction, and, and here are the concerns that, that we're having. Yeah, we'll, we'll definitely be doing that. Thank you for that.
I think it's helpful for us to make sure that we continue to get updates at every board meeting, and I appreciate these updates, and, and, and that way, we as a board and the community will know sort of where we're going and what, what we're anticipating. It's hard to predict. It's hard to know, it's hard to predict. And I, we just, we just have to take care of our, our students, keep our students and our faculty and staff safe, which actually, if we think about the magnitude of Evanston High School serving 4,000 students in this community, we touch the whole community. We impact everybody. So it is really, not lost on me, how huge our population and, and our, our arms reach out to this community. So it is quite a responsibility for us.
And, and, and the kind of things that can be alarming to us, of course, you, you know, we only have a, like, essential staff here, and how, how many outbreaks we've had in the building with so few people in it. Like, wow. And, and, and so, you know, it just really, and, you know, we have screening processes, people have to answer all these health questions before they come in every day. We take people's temperatures. Nobody comes in this building without us taking their temperature. We're doing all those things, and we have still had several outbreaks in the building just with essential personnel here. So, you know, it, it, it's frightening stuff.
That's it, go ahead.
You know, Eric, could you, you've been sharing with the board the minutes and reports of the weekly meetings that you participate in with other community leaders, really from across all of Evanston, not-for-profit leaders, other institutional leaders during the time of COVID. Could you, you know, I think it would be helpful because I think there are maybe some in the community who don't know that that's happening, and it would, it, it would help people to know that you're in touch in this way on a very regular basis, and that we're not operating or making decisions in isolation because we are a very connected community, and, and we try hard, with mixed success, I might add, to be, to be connected and, and move with a singular purpose. So maybe you could just, I, I'm not asking for all the gory details of the last report, but give, give an overview of that.
Yeah, well, first of all, I'll give a lot of credit to, to the city of Evanston. We, we have so many entities that have really been rising communication, and one of them is all of our non-for-profits. And, you know, I look at Monique, I know that she's very active as well with, with that group, and goodness, what, there must be 80 people, 80 groups represented in that alone, and, and, and that meets regularly, and, and is, is really, you know, sharing information, coordinating efforts, finding needs in the community, and, and, and really making sure that everybody is informed about many of the things going on. In addition to that, I participate every Friday. In fact, I even report out every Friday at the mayor's task force, which again is probably about 80 additional representatives and state legislators, Department of Public Health, the local hospitals, you know, Congregate Living. It, it, it's a very broad-based group, and, and, and again, you know, we, 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 we look at the data, we get reports on it, and, and we also report out to each other so that we, we have an idea of what's going on. In addition to that, I meet with all of the regional high school superintendents every single week. That's every Thursday we meet. If something's needed in between, we even meet again, but for sure, you know, every seven days, we're meeting. I also am a part of the Illinois District, High School District Association. When I first came to Illinois, high school districts are so rare, I thought they were only here north of I-80. And what I've come to discover is, no, there are high school districts, you know, going all the way downstate, and, and, and there'll be as many as 40 or 50 of us on those meetings. And I just had that meeting this morning at 11:00 AM with the, the high school district. And, and it's good to get those perspectives, not only of those of us in the region, but, you know, people in Carbondale and, and, and Peoria and, and, and other parts of the state. So I think you're, you're really making a good point that, that we, we're not operating in isolation. And, 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 and I would, again, praise the city of Evanston. I think the city of Evanston has just done a remarkable job. But I also praise my colleagues in, in, in my peer groups because of what we've been doing. And then, without getting too carried away, every one of our management team members is part of a peer group. So like our, you know, Chief Human Resources Officer is part of that group, our, our Assistant Superintendents for Instruction are, our Assistant Superintendents and Principals for Operations are, and every one of us attends regular JABALike or cohort groups. And then our management team in the district meets every Monday and every Wednesday, and part of that, in fact, we just met this morning, was bringing to the group what our learnings from, from our peer groups in, in other districts. what are learnings from, from our peer groups in, in other districts. So thank you for, for, for asking about that because I think it is important to know that, that there is a lot of collaboration and a lot of shared learning going on.
Thanks, Eric. And you even, you, you went bigger than I was asking and I'm glad you did because I had forgotten about all these other organizations that I know, you know, just Mary, for example, I think was on our last EdRed member meeting, which was a joint meeting with the school business official group where Ralph Marty did his presentation. So there are lots of places for sharing and I know our board members also have been doing, you know, Franzik, our law firm, has been doing weekly webinars that have been great.
I attend those too.
Yeah, and you, right, and you guys are in on those. And, and the Illinois Association of School Boards has been doing various webinars and programming. And I was just on one the other day and one of the questions that was asked was how many of those who were participating in that particular webinar were doing remote, remote versus hybrid versus in-person? Very informal survey, but there were a couple hundred districts represented in the survey. And I think it was two-thirds of them were fully remote. So, you know, it's, it's good to get a sense of what other, other people are doing and, and also learn what we can by coming together.
And I'll, I'll add one thing that we, we get to experience every Friday, Eric, when you report out of the mayor's task force is data, proximate data from our local hospital. So we know how many people are, have been tested. We know how many people are on, you know, in ICU. We know how many people are ventilated. We know how many unfortunate people have to be turned away because hospital beds are not available. So we get that data right there at the moment. And so it's not just what's happening in Illinois. It's what's happening on the south end of Evanston in terms of what Ameda is dealing with and what our hospital, Evanston North Shore is dealing with and what our public health department is dealing with. So it's, it, it sort of brings it to light and you have to use that information in order to make decisions. So I agree. I think it's one of the most well-informed conversation or reporting out that our community gets so that we can make the best decisions for, you know, our separate organizations. And so Eric reports out. The other thing that I want to say is that I have also experienced and witnessed that ETHS doesn't hold on to information or tell you that it's going to be something and then it's not. And so what I'm hearing from parents is that at least we're finding out about it, you know, where, where we haven't been told, yes, we're going to do this. And then, you know, within the 11th hour, we're changing the direction. And so, you know, I think there are people in the community that want things one way. And then there's science and data that's pointing us a different way. And, and so that's why, that's what I witness when I'm in all these other meetings, not nearly as many as Eric's, but when, when I'm hearing of the other meetings and the data that's being driven from our hospitals and our public health department.
And I would just like to follow up with that. It's, it's really important to recognize that we do have a wide community and many people with just a variety of perspectives and, and opinions. But I think at the end of the day, people appreciate being safe and being cared for. And I also want to take, take this opportunity to talk about our faculty and staff and just how hard everyone is working to make this academic year as successful for our students as possible. And we know how challenging this year is. We'll be talking about this year for the rest of our lives, right? We'll be trying to, to, to talk about it and, and, and trying to figure out and measure the impact of COVID and, and do we need to catch up? And it's going to be happening all over the country, all over the world, actually, I should say, but every single level. But I have to say that I appreciate, once again, Pete, you're saying that, okay, the best possible scenario is to be in person. That's great. We know that. But since we can't do that, then the next best is to do 100% remote. And in doing that, at least for now, we are responding to the academic needs and the social emotional needs, the wellbeing needs of our students. Now, we're going to hear this AP report and I, and it's, it's complicated and, and we've got, we've got a lot of data that we, we can look at here. But we have responded to some really difficult times in a way that obviously we've held on to what we are here to do most, which is educate students, recognizing all of the complexities of our community that we speak to when our first goal.
Can I just really quickly say something related to the wellbeing of our students? And I think as Pete said, in-person instruction is best in terms of instruction and achievement. We also know being with people and getting to see them in person is better for wellbeing. And I think that we all know that and we wish that we're, it were different. But I think that what we hear from, from Eric's updates throughout the month, in between meetings, all, and from Taya and others, just the amount of outreach that's being done and monitoring and catching up with kids and tracking kids down when they're, you know, we're not getting, we're not hearing from them or seeing them when we need to. There's a level of attention and a body of availability of support that is there. And I, I, I say that out loud in part because I think, I, I hope that parents know that it's there and they're accessing it for their students. But I can't, I don't think we can say it enough that there are people that are, call your teacher, call, you know, anybody at the school really and say your kid needs help. And there, there is a whole list of things and a whole group of people to jump right on that. And I, you know, I don't want to take away this, that doesn't even, we're still going to have hard times. We're all having a hard time. And I, I, I feel, I think the most for our students, they're young people. This isn't the way their life is supposed to be. But that said, this is how we have to be safe. And I just feel really strongly that ETHS is doing a great job of doing that outreach and support. And I just want to encourage everybody to access it and don't be shy. If you have questions, you have concerns about your child, about their classes, whatever, reach out. Don't, don't sit back because in this time, we really need to, to be very proactive. And I think everybody at ETHS is doing a great job of that. But obviously we need, we need to know what we don't know. So, you know, reach out as students, reach out families.
I'd just like to reiterate that. Thank you so much for that, Pat Monsell. Because if you reach out to us, we will respond. We will get to you. We will address what your needs are. We will address what the concerns are. If it's food, if it's social emotional health, whatever the need is, we will respond to you and we will connect with you as soon as we can.
Thank you, Dr. Campbell. Thank you for that. And we're reaching out as well. The high school, we are, folks are calling and reaching out to students, trying to identify from our end what's, what, what students need to be contacted. So that's happening. And that's wrapped up, continues to happen. This too shall pass. Yes. All right. Are we ready to move, move on? All right. So we have a report on the advanced placement. Dale, lead for it. You are on.
And this will be Dale and, and Dr. Pete.
Dr. Davis.
All right. I'm going to try to share my screen. If you give me a minute, I'm sharing a PowerPoint. So I'm going to have to load it up. So just one, let's hope this works.
All right, here we go. Tonight, we're going to go over the advanced placement report for this school, for last school year. It's aligned to District Goal One, Equitable and Excellent Education. Just to give some context, provide some context in the long view. Our AP program has grown significantly since 2006, 2007. And we have been recognized in a variety of media outlets. Washington Post, Educational Leadership, we won a Magna Award a few years ago. We've also been recognized by the College Board, the Minority Student Achievement Network, Phi Delta Kappa, Best Schools, PBS NewsHour, et cetera. This is important. I put this in here as my PSA, my public service announcement that public universities and community colleges in Illinois are required to award college credit for AP scores of three or higher. That's significant. That's not true of all public universities in other states, but that is absolutely true in Illinois and that's by statute. So that, that's, that's by legislation. So that was legislated. So it's a way for students who earn a three or higher to actually get what's called transcribed credit, not just place, course placement, but actually shows up in the transcript as a parallel course at the college or university. Very, very important for everyone out there to know that. So let me provide a little bit of context on our 2020 AP exams. They were administered in May 2020 by the College Board using an online platform for the first time ever. Students across the country encountered challenges submitting responses using the online platform. The vast majority of students were able to do so successfully, but there was a portion of students who, who struggled with that. ETHS was no exception. A lot of this had to do with College Board's platform and the submission process. Specifically, taking a photo of a response and uploading it was a real challenge with that platform. Technologically though, if we get closer to home, ETHS students were positioned to do well on this exam. That's due in part to our one-to-one. It's also Chromebook deployment, but it's also due to our hotspots that we, we got out into students. We got to students who needed it. And remember, we did all of this fourth quarter. Instructionally, our teachers prepared our students to do well despite pandemic instruction during fourth quarter. Fourth quarter was really, really difficult for families, for students, for teachers. We pivoted on a, on a dime to, to remote learning when we really didn't have a good definition of what that was. The state kept changing their guidelines on grading. But I want, this is a credit to our students and our teachers to really, who really doubled down, prepared our students to do quite well on those exams. And our students did do quite well on that exam, in that new exam environment. Students took these from home on their laptops, very, very important distinction, rather than pen, paper in a room with 150 students. So they were prepared and they actually excelled on these online exams. In fact, ETHS students exceeded national achievement numbers in 23 of 26 courses. And if we go with meets or exceeds, we're at 25 of 26. So that's, that's significant. Our students did very, very well compared to national numbers. So here's the, you know, we always talk about, you know, and we always update this slide for continuity sake. But for the seventh consecutive year, we had more scores of three or higher than we had AP exams in 2010. In 2020, we had 1,732 AP test scores of three or higher in 2020 compared to 1,384 exams administered in 2010. More scores of three or higher than we were administering actual exams in 2010. That's an incredible 10-year perspective and growth. Since that time, since 2007, we have 1,732 AP test scores of three or higher. If we go back to 2007, which is the start date on a lot of this, when we talk about our work, we had 872 AP test scores. That's a 98% increase. We've nearly doubled our, our AP test scores of three or higher, which is significant. Going back to that first slide I shared about three or higher, getting you transcribed credit in Illinois and also three and a higher being rewarded across the country for AP credit in general. Just check with your, the college you're applying to or the college you're admitted to. Our access numbers are up significantly and our test scores are up significantly. And historically, each sub group has made gains. That's consistent with years past. We continue to see growth despite being in the midst of a pandemic. And only, the College Board decided last year for the first time to only charge students who took the test. So up until the point a student was taking a test, they could opt not to, they could just not take it and they weren't charged. That's different than in years past. That was a one-time offer from the College Board. And, and the number of students who took advantage of those tests, again, was quite, quite astounding. You know, aside from the, the exceeding national percentages in 23 of 26 subjects that were tested, we had the highest number of black students earning a three or higher on one or more AP exam in school history. And here's an interesting statistic. We had the highest percentage of students tested in each subgroup earning a three or higher. And that's, you know, that's total tested divide, you know, as the denominator. And in the numerator, the number of students getting a three or higher. So those are very high percentages and giving these large numbers fairly significant to be able to, to accomplish during a pandemic. So here's a, just a chart showing that increase in the number of exams. Again, 2,311 were taken last school year. You see the number of threes or higher. We had 1,732, representing a 98% increase. You see a 67% increase in the scores of four or higher. We always group four or five on this report because it's really difficult to tease out the difference between a four or five on the exam. But a four or five are very, very high scores on an AP exam. And you'll see that we had 1,054 of those. This is the chart where we have the denominator is all students in 11th and 12th grade. And we look at the percentage of students taking one or more exams. And, you know, even in a pandemic, we were able to get quite a, quite a good proportion of students to take, take exams of all the students. And not all students take AP classes. So, you know, you're, you're already in a, in a, in a proportion, but 56% of all 11th and 12th graders take an AP course. And then 43% of all 11th and 12th graders earn a three or higher. And here's the percentage change to represent relative change in size between populations across time period. There's just another way to look at the data. In 2011, our overall enrollment was 892. In terms of our, our black African-American students, we've gone up to 956. That's some percent increase. During that time, we've seen a 28% increase in students taking AP classes from 99 to 127. And we have gone from 34 students getting a, a score of three or higher in 2011 to 67 students in the 2020 school year. Here you see our Latinx numbers. 44% increase in enrollment, a 29% increase in AP students, students who enroll in AP courses, and a 53% increase in scores of three or higher. It's always interesting to look at the overall enrollment increase and then compare that to the increase in AP students and the increase in AP three or higher. Our white students, we had 1,349 students. It went to 1690 last year. That's 25% increase. We saw a 24% increase in AP students and a 35% increase in scores of three or higher. High success. These are our total numbers. You'll see, again, this is interesting. We had 989 students tested, which again is, is very high. We had 803 scores of a three or higher. And that means that the percent of test takers who scored a three or higher was We had 803 scores of a three or higher, and that means that the percent of test takers who scored a three or higher was 81%. That's that's a high watermark, that's incredible. Our for our for our black African-American students, again, we had 127 students tested. We had scores of three or higher for 67 students, which means 53% of this of that group that tested scored a three or higher. Again, you'll notice the number 67 is a high watermark, as is the percentage of three or higher for that group tested. We have to be really careful with that percent three or higher of group tested because you can always increase that if you decrease the number of total students taking the test, so it's just something to bear in mind. High access and success for Latinx students, again, 103 total students, 78 threes or higher, that's a 76% success rate. Again, the numbers, you know, if you go back to 1112, there were 51 students getting a three or higher, and there were 80 students taking the AP exam. So again, we're seeing growth, the nice thing is, we saw growth and stability across a pandemic last year. Our white students again did quite well on the exam with 645 total AP students, 563 with a three or higher, or 87% overall. Here are some of the courses that we we have, these are courses with over 100 students earning a three or higher. This is significant because this is this is big, these are big-ticket courses, these are courses that are, you know, they're a big tent, there are 389 students enroll, you know, who took AP English Language and Composition, and 297 of them scored a three or higher. That's nearly 300 students scoring a three or higher in an English course, that's that's their junior year English class, AP English class. Again, that 76% beat the national average. You see a similar AP, AB Calc, lots of students, 238 students take AB Calculus. We saw 151 scores of three or higher, which is an all-time high, and the success rate was 63%, which is significantly high, which is very high compared to to years past, we've seen a lot of growth in that area. AP Psych, we had 208 students take the exam this year, 159 of them, for 76, and we see 213 students getting a three or higher in AP US History last year. Now we look at the courses where we had 50 to 100 students earning a three or higher, again, these are very, these tend to be fairly large enrollments. And we had 93 students, 96% of our BC Calculus students get a three or higher, that's 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 great at any, by any, any, any margin that you're looking at. Lit and Comp, we had 87 kids get AP credit, Biology, we had 98 students, Spanish Language and Comp, 78, and so on. Again, you'll see also for the first time ever, and I really want to highlight this, our physics class is at 53% success rate, and if you look back historically, that course has had had its challenges. You know, it was used to be around 20% success rate, so that that's that's a lot of hard work and on behalf of our teachers and modify in adjusting the curriculum and changing the curriculum and and also making instructional changes as well day to day. So again, you might say, oh, but that's only 53%, but again, the journey, if we just look back a few years ago, has been has been quite impressive in that area. This is the College Board's way of honoring students who take multiple AP classes. This is not something that I think is, I think it's something to keep track of, but I also want to be very cautious in this because this this our philosophy with with advanced placement is to take one, you know, we want every, we want as many students as possible to take one AP class, we think that's that's really, really important. And and the data bears that out in terms of success and persistence in college. But this is by the College Board issues this chart every year, and it's based on students taking and being successful in multiple AP classes. I don't have what an AP scholar is in front of me right now, but just be rest assured, these are students all the way up to National AP Scholar, where we have students taking multiple AP classes over their high school career and being successful, and we were able to, the College Board recognized 414 ETHS students last year, which again is a is a is a higher number than we've seen even in the recent past, so just another way to look at it. Again, I don't endorse students taking, you know, five, six, seven AP classes, but there's some numbers with that. The bottom line is this, look, the percentage of students who persist, this is something NIRA put together for us, the Northwestern Evanston Education Research Alliance put this together for us, they looked at ETHS students, several cohorts, and they said, you know, they were looking for indicators that would predict college persistence, and if we remember back historically in our work with District 65 and Northwestern, the persistence was tagged to five contiguous semesters of enrollment, which means five semesters in a row you were enrolled in college, which means essentially, you know, college readiness from ETHS's perspective really means you're going into your halfway through your junior year of college. Now, for whatever that's worth, I mean, it's an interesting thing to aspire to in terms of an outcome, but here we see what what difference taking an AP test. Doesn't matter whether you got a one, two, three, or four, that's not what this is about. This is really the number of AP tests taken during your entire high school career. You will notice that if you took zero AP courses, you have about a 35%, you know, 35% of students who took zero persist. There's a persistence factor, 35% of students who take zero AP courses, you know, they persist into their fifth contiguous year. But you see, it almost doubles, it goes up to over, it goes up to 60% if you take just one AP class. If you take two AP classes, sit for two AP tests, you're at 70% of those students persist into their junior set halfway through their junior year of college, which is significant. And then you see three AP classes, now this means junior, senior year, you take a total of three, and we even have AP classes, we have a few AP classes we offer sophomore year. You'll see the number starts to level off around three, four, or five, you get up around 80, and then it tails off a little bit in terms of persistence. But again, it's important to know, it's important to think about, and it's unique data to ETHS students, this is not national data from the College Board. This is data on ETHS cohorts of graduates that went on and persisted for five contiguous semesters and what the signal is there for taking AP tests. And Dale, I'm gonna turn it over to you now, Mr. Leepforth, to talk through how we support our students in this environment, and you'll notice some of these graphics are gonna look pretty cool because we've updated a lot of the the aesthetics given the online environment we're in. You with me, Dale?
Upgraded our digital platform, thank you, Dr. Davis. There was a lot of data points there that, you know, I wanted to like almost pause on because they were really some some highlights. If you look at the past several years, in the spring, we're in a pandemic, we still are, but a lot of the data that you're seeing is coming out of that fourth quarter time that was really up in the air for our teachers and students. You know, ETHS, we continue to have a strong AP program, our student participation has risen, more students are successful every year, and our program's more diverse than ever. So how does that happen? You know, we have a team of AP teachers, there's 70 AP teachers that are working incredibly hard at making this happen, particularly in this time, as we highlighted earlier in the meeting. They're teaching remotely, it's something that they've never done before, and to balance this challenging academic course that we're teaching with well-being, belonging, creating relationships, is very difficult to do in person. It's even more difficult to do in the remote setting, so you know, on the on the backs of our teachers and students, we've really seen a lot of success. Is if this is the first time you're hearing about it, I'll give you a little bit of a background. Team ASAP, you'll hear me talk about that several times, you know, throughout the next several slides. Team ASAP stands for Team Access and Success in Advanced Placement. It was a group of about nine kids back in the day, and they started with an event called the Pathways to AP Forum, and from that forum grew a variety of supports. We realized through talking with students that if they just walked into an AP class the first day, that that could be really intimidating, that walking into that class, you know, the feelings that the students had weren't always positive ones, and so we wanted to start early on from even the year before they stepped into that class to make sure that students were prepared, that they were aware of the classes, that they were ready for the the classes, that they had access to the AP classes, and that they were set up to be successful. So a series of events were created to support students both the year before and the year during their AP class, and that started most recently early December here, students are starting to choose the courses that they're going into, and so that kicks off kind of the years of support. And they can can go through the rest of this year in the spring, we have a series of events leading into summer, and then as they walk into the AP class, they've had a lot of opportunities to experience AP curriculum, to meet AP teachers, to talk with other AP students, and feel more prepared as they enter into the class. This year, if you go to the next slide, the the biggest shift this year has been, you know, moving everything we've done in terms of AP supports online. That started in the spring, right away, we were going into AP review season, and so we had to adjust everything we did in terms of our in-person reviews, our practice AP exams, and even the format of the exams were different. We were lucky to have AP classrooms set up and a variety of other resources that we had started to do online, but this was really new to us. So our whole AP review, our AP Spring Training, that's set up for the following year, and this summer, AP and College Application Summer Camp, all of those needed to be moved online, which was quite an undertaking. But it was also helpful, students had easier access to some of the programs where sometimes you weren't able to access, the sessions were recorded. Students were able to, from wherever they were at, sign in and participate in the programs, and so we saw an uptick in in participation in some of the events, which was a pleasant surprise that we found by by going digital. We are trying to increase our virtual presence, we have an Instagram account that, you know, Ms. Lula actually outsourced and is having a team that's working on that to make sure that we can get the word out. Instagram is is probably not the most cutting edge, maybe we should have a TikTok account, but I think we're trying to do what we can to reach students in a variety of different ways during this time. We've found through talking to our students, we have about 600 students that are involved heavily in Team ASAP, and we've found that they really continue to want a sense of connection in whatever way that is, and that connection can come in class, but it also a lot of times is the informal out-of-class connections that we're trying to build for our students. We've redesigned our supports this year, we had AP Fall Academy, the AP Fair and the Pathways to AP Forum, I'll talk about those events briefly in a minute. And we wanted to not get stale, every year we give this report, every year we see some gaps and we see some strengths, and we wanted to find growth areas, but also kind of reset, reframe for the time that we're in, but also be sure to make sure that we're giving students, giving teachers, giving departments what they really need in terms of our AP success. So Josh Brown and Tina Lula, our AP Recruitment and Retention Coordinators, have worked with the AP Chairs, AP Course Teams, and really asked, like, what do you need? We're always asking students, but we have not gone back for a while to talk to to teachers and chairs, and so that was very insightful in terms of figuring out, like, where are the where are the gaps? Where are the places that we can really help to support our teachers and students better, and and a lot of information came from that that we're now acting upon. One of the good things about Team ASAP is we find something out, and we really can turn it around as soon as possible, part of the name as well, to make sure that we put that into action right away. We have our Team ASAP lunch meetings, we usually give out, you know, pizza and drinks and salad, and we have food for them, obviously, we're virtually now. What's an interesting part of that is we do have smaller groups of students there, but our race and equity conversations have a brand-new depth that we're really excited about, and the kind of takeaways that the students then bring into their classrooms from those conversations has been really impactful in the classroom, particularly around the the sense of belonging in the AP classroom. Our Advisory Board, we have about 30 Advisory Board captains, and they've really been heavily involved and really asking for what more they can do, and that's really exciting to see just the the growth in the Advisory Board responsibilities over time. We have connections to the Educational Foundation, Addy, Class of 21 is on there now, and recently, we had a collaboration with SOAR, which is really exciting. We we have kind of worked in parallel with the Students Organizing Against Racism, they came in and did a session with our Team ASAP during our lunch meetings within the past week, and that's really an exciting place, and we found some areas that we can work together moving forward and really collaborate on our work, which is which is exciting. AP Fall Academy, just to highlight one of the changes that we made, we very, we used to be very course-specific, and this year we found, we have found in the past several years, but this year we actually, you know, enacted a new framework for it in the virtual setting, and you can see the bullet points there, but we talked a little bit less about what course you're in and some of the details of that course, and a little bit more about some of these broader issues that you can see on the bullet points. So we know that we can give the kids the support that they need on the content, but we realized this event really needed to be more about what it started to be in the beginning. A Fall Academy was meant to give students a kickstart, an energy boost, kind of to keep them going early on when they might experience some struggles. So how to be in an AP classroom, you know, navigating the racial dynamic, what available supports are there, how to use them, how do you ask questions during class? How do you create a support system, really focusing on belonging and the community in the classroom? And how do you time manage and organize yourself, which has really been kind of a critical factor for students, particularly in the virtual environment? And we needed to switch from, you know, if you take the ETHS AP Fair, students, we had information that we got out about the courses, one of our main things is, did you know there's AP courses? Did you know we have 34 different courses in seven different departments? Did you know if you're interested in art, if you're interested in in government and politics, we have these types of courses that students can take? And we had an amazing event in the hub the last couple of years, and we really had an increase in numbers, we had to ship that whole event online. What happened was the students were able to produce videos to explain the courses, and we have them all up online for for people to refer to, and then we had a Zoom session where we were able to to problem solve, answer questions, and we got a lot of good information from the students, but also we were able to give it back to them during the breakout session. So a new look for the fair, but something that can last online for a while, and we can continue to improve upon, and I think moving forward, we'll do both. When we eventually, it's safe to get back in person, we're hoping to do that in addition to the digital resource that we have. Pathways to AP Forum was kind of our signature event that started Team ASAP, and again, it was a crowd of people and a panel on stage, we did it differently this year, we had a YouTube livestream where we had, well, there's Dr. Wetherspoon making a cameo there, and Marcus Campbell was our leading our panel and facilitated our panel and Team ASAP students. And one of the cool things about this this year was several of the students on the panel mentioned that this event, the Pathways to AP Forum, was the place where they saw a student who looked like them, and they said to themselves, I want to be that student in the future. So I think several of the leaders of the AP program had, you know, tears in their eyes as they listened to the students say, I saw myself up there, that's what I want to be, and now I'm a leader and leading the AP program. And so that was that was a special moment for us during the Pathways to AP Forum. This work is done on the backs of two people, if we go to the next slide, Josh Brown in the English Department and Tina Lula, they're our AP Recruitment and Retention Coordinators, and a lot of the heavy lifting really went to these two in terms of moving everything we did in person to the digital framework, working with seven department chairs, 70 teachers. This year, we have, we'll probably top 1,000 students this year and 2,500 exams, if you can imagine just the the amount of work that goes into overseeing the AP program and collaborating with all of those adults and students, but also transitioning our supports that were so vital and critical to student success in person, how to replicate that online while still creating that connectedness with students, and that was really on the backs of of these two, so I just wanted to take a moment to recognize their work. Our website is there, tinyurl.com backslash Team ASAP, and that lets you know all of the different supports for the AP program and some additional information as well.
So before we go to questions, I just wanted to give you guys the lay of the land for this school year and where we are. I met with a 70, probably at least 70 of our AP teachers, I think I met with all of them about a few weeks ago. Our students, you know, our AP students are very stressed out this school year in particular, right? They're 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 still, the College Board is inflexible around the amount of content and skill development that they're requiring on these exams. Our students are working super hard, our teachers are working very hard to get that content. We've heard about the workload, I've contacted the College Board a few times and said, hey, you know, here's the deal, the students are stressed, the teachers are stressed, we're in the middle of a pandemic. Can you reduce that content or the skills that you're testing so that you can accurately reflect what's going on, not just at ETHS, but across the country? I've heard nothing in response from the College Board, which is a bit frustrating, given our relationship and and what we bring to the table in terms of our our success and how we've been oftentimes held up as a beacon of that success. So I've written a piece that I've that I'm shopping around to different op-ed outlets to see if it'll get published. If it doesn't, it'll show up on my LinkedIn, but it really is, it really is If it doesn't, it'll show up on my LinkedIn, but it really is, it really is challenges, this this current approach that the College Board has, that they they are not acknowledging any of the challenges any student has. And I think ETHS students are well-positioned to do well in this environment. But when you look nationally at at, you know, and you see the challenges that other districts are having with remote learning or with, you know, just the inconsistencies that they're facing, it really, really is tone deaf for the College Board to say this is business as usual. We have colleges look changing the way they're, you know, their grading systems right now. We have all of this flexibility in higher ed. And for the College Board to be inflexible really is wrong. I want to say that here. I say it every opportunity I have. But, you know, hopefully they'll they'll hear us and they'll they'll make some changes. They are going to announce their plans for testing later in January. So maybe they'll make some concessions at that point. I hold out hope. And with that, Dale and I can answer some questions.
Wow. Thank you, both of you. I really, well, we'll see what happens late January from the College Boards, because I do know colleges, along with high schools, have been trying to be flexible and make a way for students who are struggling with all kinds of stuff, not just academically, but, you know, we know this. People are having a hard time in this country, and I am concerned about the the students taking AP classes who are stressed this year. I understand why, but it's really, I guess, to be seen what happens with the College Boards.
And if we think about it, students signed up for this in February, well before any of this was really a issue on anyone's radar.
Right, right. Well, the numbers are amazing, given fourth quarter last year. You know, just what we were going through a fourth quarter. It is unbelievable that these numbers are so good. So I'm sure that much of that teaching was happening, obviously, before March. Obviously.
Yeah, y- y- you don't get there in 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 one quarter. Absolutely, Pat. You get there as a result of working hard and having a solid instructional base throughout. Absolutely.
Absolutely, yes.
I want to lift up one thing that was early in the report, because it it just really is remarkable. Again, we're in a pandemic, you know, you know. So how are kids in other schools doing? What's happening with AP around the country? And in 23 of our 26 cognitive areas, our students actually exceeded the national performance. And and in 25 of the 26, they met or exceeded the national performance. That's the one that just blew me away. I'm also glad to see every demographic did better and 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 all the, I mean, that's huge. But it just blew me away, because you think, well, what's the effect of the pandemic? You know, is this happening with all, all schools or all courses or whatever? And so Pete and Dale, thank you for sharing that one. I I thought that one really stood out.
And the other thing I want to lift up is, I know I felt like I've said this a lot tonight, the complexity of moving everything virtual. Everything, everything. And I, you know, have to say, I just appreciate that, because moving everything virtual means rethinking every piece of everything you do. And that is tedious. And it takes creativity. It it takes technology for sure, which we've all gotten better at. But it, you know, it just takes creativity how to do it.
You know, one of the things we learned with going online for the events, specifically the AP Forum, was that we were able to reach more people.
Yeah, yeah.
You know, and I think that's the lesson learned here and that, you know, and that goes for a lot of our other events, not just AP-related, but our Engineering Night, same thing. And that's a credit to just the ability for, not just for us to adapt, but a a way to reach families, a different way to reach families. And I think there's real power in that. You know, Dale and I participated in the course selection process night last week. And again, far more parents, guardians participated in that than would in an in-person environment. So so there are there are real opportunities here with the technology that that aren't going to go away and that we're going to leverage in the future.
Absolutely, yeah. These are the pieces that will stick. I'll open it up for questions. Board? Anybody? Comments? Pat?
Yeah, I, I mean, I just continue to be excited about our our overtime numbers and how we've increased the number of students taking classes, taking the exams, getting threes and above. I mean, it is really amazing, and it is a testament to all that great work that Dale and all the other Team ASAP folks are doing, and all the teachers, the 70, you know, AP teachers, that number just makes, is amazing. So and I think that in some ways, you know, that we did as what, I mean, we did amazing in a, in a, in a year of a pandemic. And, you know, if it was less, I don't think any of us would be upset. We would understand. So that just all the more proof of the hard work and the creativity and support that's gone into the students. But unfortunately, we do still see the the pattern that we see when we have achievement data, right? That our students by subgroup show a similar pattern, even though we have made significant gains with our Black students and with our Latinx students. It's still, it persists. And so one of the things I was looking at, and this may not, you know, Dale and Pete, you can tell me, it doesn't really, it was a fluke. But, you know, I look at the the African-American data over time, and there was this, you know, we obviously have gone up a lot, but we've started to go, we've kind of gone down a little bit in the last couple of years. And I don't, I don't know if that means anything. I'm sure there are lots of ways to explain that. But I guess I was wondering if we were doing something that was continuing that positive trajectory in like 14, 15 through 2017 that maybe we need to learn from or, you know, I guess that that's my little read into a question. But the bigger question is, I know you care about this. I know you're working on it. But what are some of the levers that you see to start to show that data come together where more of our students are in a narrower band in terms of numbers of of people taking AP classes and the tests and the scores and all that wonderful stuff that's happening?
Yeah, you know, I I'm glad you brought that up, Pat. I mean, you know, we we haven't changed our recruitment efforts, but one of the things that it is a lagging indicator on is, you know, we really had stronger cohorts for literacy and reading in those those years than we do currently. So that's just something to be aware of, you know. You know, last year we reported AP, students taking AP courses and the students not taking AP courses by median star score. And, you know, over over time, we've seen that the cohort has shifted and that it's, it it goes back to literacy, goes back to reading. And that should be no, that shouldn't be a shock for anyone on the panel. But we have, you know, we we have expanded our recruiting. We've expanded our well-being work, our sensible line. We've, the Team ASAP meetings have a strong racial equity focus in terms of the conversations we're having, making space welcoming, meeting and talking to teachers. But that initial hurdle of taking the AP class, just signing up for it, really is driven, one of the primary drivers, and this isn't our driver. We don't have, on any of our courses, do we say that you have to be reading at a certain grade level? But students who are not reading at at a sufficient level just don't take the classes.
And and I'm going to say the same thing just a little differently. There is a direct correlation between how prepared students are when they enter this high school in the ninth grade to what we correlate with things such as taking AP courses by their junior and senior year. And I I won't quote the statistics, but if you look at the reports of District 65 students for the five years leading up until what includes these cohorts, I think you'll be able to see some correlations.
Yeah, we we've seen the the correlation with literacy, as you both highlighted. Yeah, I think most recently, we've had the same question. You know, who who are the students that aren't taking AP classes? So Tina Lula, Josh Brown, and I were like, we're about to have data for the semester grades. We can look at seniors and who's taking AP classes and who's not taking AP classes. And they're like, why don't we look at juniors? Because we might be able to do something about that, right? So we're, we're going to look at the level of like, who's taking an AP class? And not put them off to the side and then see who who's not taking them and what's their story at a pretty granular level. We did that a few years back and and saw some results based on that. But who who are the kids that we're talking about that haven't yet, you know, been exposed to an AP class? And so we're gonna, we're gonna look at who those students are and hopefully have some positive, you know, things come out of that, that study. Kind of taking a deep dive and looking at an individual student or individual group of students and see what's what's the story here? I think there's an individual story and a group story that will help us be informed as we move forward. So we know that we have some semester grades coming out. We know that course selection is just happening. So we have a couple of good markers to pull information, and we can look at it and and see where that leads us. And I think that could show us pockets where, you know, we might want to go after to try to get more students either accessing the classes or finding more success once they, once they get into the classes. So that's something that we're planning to look at in the the next month or two as we have some data points coming out.
Thank you.
Got a couple of, yeah, one question. This is either for Dale or Pete. In your conversations with SOAR, I'm curious to know, was there any information you found that helped? That helped us inform our practice?
Yes, is the short answer to that. I think what we experienced was the beginning of a conversation there. It's a conversation that we had, but they put some structure to it. They gave us questions that we could actually bring back into the classrooms. What Josh Brown is really good at, being our, from the English Department, he's really good at telling the story and kind of summarizing the meetings. And what that does is it goes out to the 70 AP teachers, you know, and other, you know, ETHS staff. So they're able to see the types of questions we were asking, like, what do the other students in your AP class look like? How do you feel in an AP class? How often have you learned about someone who looks like you in your AP class? These are questions that were important for the students to to think about and discuss, but it also is important to go back to the faculty. So every meeting we have, the summary emails go out to the AP teachers, the staff. And what happens is they come back to Josh with questions, and these types of thoughts and conversations impact their practice. And they're not just 70 AP teachers who teach an AP class. They also teach our Pathway Honors classes. They teach freshmen. They teach sophomores. They teach juniors. They teach the classes along the pathway, including their AP class. And so this has an impact on them and their classrooms that are AP, but also their other classes as well. And we always task our students to continue the conversations. This was a great 45 minutes, right? It was great to spend this time together and dig in, but the work is never done, and we need to continue these conversations moving on. So this particularly meeting gave us some specific questions to take back into the classroom. And I think there was a, there was a pretty broad impact on those questions, some of which we've been, we've been asking for a long time and others which were asked in a different way. And I think that can continue the conversation. And they've actually, we've talked about what can we do next? What what's our next step? You know, what will we partner with you next on to keep this conversation growing and continue the collaboration? So I think probably the biggest impact in the classroom was sharing those questions from the students and from kind of the teacher lens as they, as they reflect on what's happening in the classroom generally, but also currently in this, you know, crazy situation we find ourselves in. How are you, how are you all dealing with this right now, you know, in the pandemic that we're in? I don't know if that answers your question, but.
Yeah, it does. I mean, it it's still unfolding, but I'm just wondering what types of information we can, you know, SOAR is a pretty strong resource in terms of student voice. And and also a follow-up one. We do exit interviews, right, for seniors? The seniors? So is there a question on the eight about, are there questions on the exit interview about AP courses? I'm just wondering what we're finding out as seniors are transitioning out of Evanston, having gone through the experience, you know, with them reflecting back? Just in terms of collecting information and.
We're gonna do that, dude. Welcome to Team ASAP, man. I love that. That is, that is great. We're gonna do that.
We'll get you a T-shirt. What's your size? I think we do that informally, right? So we have about 600 kids on the team, and we have lots of conversations with them. But in terms of a formal structure within our AP support system, that's not something we do in a, in a kind of systematic way. I would have to defer to someone else who's more knowledgeable and what the kind of, you know, end of, end of the year, senior year, planning for the future. You look at Portrait of a Graduate, some of the other things, our ICAPS, you know, what happens in Naviance and some of the other, end of the kind of high school journey pieces, what what specifically they ask, but I know that we don't do that. And I always try to take on things that I can own and do. And that's one of the things, we have access to all the AP students and the AP teachers. So that's something that we could probably do more formally than we do now. So yes, we do it, but not in the structured way that you're explaining. From the ETHS kind of AP program lens, it probably is happening in other ways, and that's something that we'll have to look into.
Yeah, it'd be nice to capture that. Hopefully that would help inform us. And I'm going to hold you all to that T-shirt.
We'll get you.
All right. Put your size in the chat. We'll make sure.
Gretchen, go ahead.
Sorry, unmute there. Um, so on that literacy point, it seems like that's, we're talking about the preparedness of our ninth graders. That's just another reason that we need to get back together with our colleagues over at District 65 and kind of figure out what what we need to do there. And it reinforces, I would also say, the work of groups like Cradle to Career as well and everything we're trying to do to move our kids from that pre-K preschool timeframe all the way up to when they reach our our place. And I know we've talked about all that many, many times. Pete, I was wondering if you could put your slideshow back up again? And if you can lay your hands on that without too much trouble. I just wanted to go to a couple of the earlier slides. Am I torturing you? You look like you're in pain. You're also muted.
I can try to pull it up if you want me to.
Oh, Dale's got it, got it.
What, do you have it more handy than me, Pete? What are you looking for? There you go.
Oh, thank you, guys. I'm really sorry. Okay, and if you scroll down, get to the graphs. Okay, so, stop. Yeah, yeah, so go a little further, a little further. Yeah, stop there. And then was there one before that? No, okay, down, okay. So first of all, I want to thank you because in many, but not all of your slides, you do a very nice job of incorporating the percentage of our students who have taken the exam or achieved a particular score, which tells a much better story to pick up on this story language than raw numbers. And Dale, it's so good that you're here, because you're the math guy. And I am most assuredly not a math gal. I am very much an English major. So I really am treading into difficult waters here. I am very much an English major, so I really am treading into difficult waters here. But I much prefer, as you all know, because I reiterate it every time, to see the percentage business. I see you highlighting that. And I do appreciate it. But then, so it raises a question when I look at this particular chart. And I'm kind of looking at the miniature versions off to the side to make sure I, I'm looking at the right thing. And I think this is what you were addressing before, where there, there's sort of a, there's a rise and then we seem to be coming back down a little bit as, as we get into the modern times. So, um, yeah, right, thank you. We're doing a good job collaborating virtually, I think. So is, is this what you were referring to when we were talking about the challenges of the cohorts coming in, incoming cohorts? You're muted there, Pete. I think you're saying yes. Nope, still, still no sound. No, still, still.
How about that?
There you are.
The answer is yes.
Yes.
This is yes, this tells, this tracks very well with our reading.
That was very dramatic, all that time to get the word yes out.
You know, I was just, I could pretty much tell you were saying it, but I didn't want to put it in your mouth. I felt like I was doing some sort of weird cross-examination for mute witness, but. So this is telling the story of a change in the literacy levels of the cohorts that are coming in.
It tracks very, it tracks closely to that, yeah. These are two-year, this is looking at two years, right? We're combining a 11th and 12th grade in this. But yes, you see over time how it go, it goes up and then it starts to come down, which is exactly what we've seen with our reading data. It tracks fairly closely.
I would echo that. The literacy also, I believe the class sizes were larger. So if you can imagine, the denominator gets bigger, so the percentages drop. So that's why we kind of want to get a little bit more granular on it to see.
That's exactly, you're going straight to my next point, which is the class sizes are getting bigger, which is why it's important though to look at the percentage. Because if you look at raw numbers, it just looks like this upward trend. And, you know, we would have to, if that's the approach we're taking, you know, our class sizes, I suspect, are going to start trending, you know, somewhat smaller. At some point, at some point.
At some point.
I, you know, just based on what you see in the upcoming grades. So, um, but this, what this also says though, is the success we're having in those who are taking the tests in scoring a three or above is, is meaningful. Because those numbers have gone up.
Yep.
So anyway, I just, this, to me, this, in terms of where we're going, I applaud you guys for the work, all of you. I really applaud our students actually, because the nightmare of taking these AP tests in the COVID environment and the, all these technical, technology glitches and the horror show that the organization is to deal with, I think, around these tests, as Pete has mentioned, I think is really important to note and acknowledge. So, so I don't want, so I applaud in particular, I think, our students and our teachers for getting our kids to the point where they can survive this, not just survive, but do really, really well. But in terms of going forward, in terms of making change, this, this particular slide, I think, is, is the one from which, you know, future work should, should emanate. And Dale, I appreciate your point about trying to dig deeper on this and figure it out. And I would just reiterate that also our coordination with District 65 on these incoming cohorts that transition to ninth grade remains even more critical, I would say.
Yep.
Yeah, and I would say this graph, you picked this one out, it's the same one I picked out. Why is, why is it going down? And I think we have a lot of, you know, you look across even the little smaller, you know, graphs on the side. You can see a lot of our numbers are going up and they really jumped even in a pandemic. And this is one that shows that we still have growth. And I think we'd like to find out exactly the best ways to do that moving forward, so.
Yeah, I appreciate that. Thank you.
Now I'm going to stop the share with this. And if I have to bring it back, it'll be a little bit easier next time.
No, forget it. I'm really done, truly.
Liz.
Um, yeah, I just wanted to commend you guys for all of this sort of preparatory work that leads up to the students taking the AP classes. The timeline you showed with all the different opportunities for them to learn about AP is just something we should be so proud of. It's, it's amazing to me. I'm also interested in learning a little bit more about the racial equity conversations in the breakout rooms. So I'm wondering, you can tell us a little bit more of what that looks like as far as who leads the conversations, what does, what does the conversation look like? How many students of color attend those conversations?
Sure. Um, thank you for that question. We, we have the, a smaller number of students virtually than we had in person. So in person, you'd have 50 to 75 students. There was pizza, the gathering, the energy kids coming in from the hallway, right? So we have a different group in there. The group is, uh, looks a lot like Evanston. It's very representative. It has a racial diversity that mirrors that of the school. The conversation, we usually have a topic that we're focused on. So this most recent one was, you know, we had a pretty structured, you know, kind of race and equity conversation where we led them through the protocols. Next meeting, we're going to have one that relates to belonging and wellbeing. That's kind of the focus. So in that particular case, we're bringing in some experts. We think a little bit of wellbeing right now actually has to do with some executive functioning. So I think we're going to bring in some experts on that as well. So we're going to bring in an expert from the executive functioning group. We're going to bring in some social workers, some psychologists, and they'll be leading that particular one. So we always have a focus that's there. We have a mission to ensure that all students have access to our AP classes. We want every student that goes to Evanston Township High School to take one AP class in an area they're interested in with a focus on our students of color. So that's always central to our conversation in Team ASAP, that idea of AP. We have freshmen in there now, but we still want to kind of guide them along that pathway. So although the conversation on the next meeting, for example, will be on, you know, mental health, wellbeing, executive functioning, we will have as a theme rolling through that, the, the conversations around, what is it like? What's your experience like in the classroom? How can we as a team make it better? What's the impact on you? And speak from your experience and then how can we make positive change coming out of that? So whatever the theme might be, early in the year was just kind of like, how do you begin to create relationships with other students in an AP classroom? But part of that is, you know, what if you are the only, or one of the few students of color in that classroom? How do you, how do you build those relationships? How do you create study groups? How do we ensure study groups are equitable in the classroom? So although you're talking about like, how do you start the year out in a virtual environment? It centers around, you know, that experience of a student in class, a group of students in class. What is it like? And how can we make that a more positive experience for you? How can we work together as a team? There's that teammate aspect of it, you know, Team ASAP is all about. Let's make this highly competitive environment one that's more collaborative. How do you have a space that's traditionally a white space? How can you make it a space for everyone where everyone belongs? So I think no matter the topic that we choose at a particular meeting, that theme is always a part of the conversation. So you could be talking about preparing for semester exams, but we're talking about how can we have that be an equitable experience for all students? How can we make sure there's equity in the resources? What is it like forming a study group? How can teachers help you form study groups? What is it, assigned seats versus not assigned seats as you do your review sessions? What resources are available to you? So we'll always come back to our primary focus, no matter the topic that we're talking about. So hopefully that answers your question, at least gives you a little window into the conversations that we have.
It does, thank you. And then I was just gonna, I was just wondering, do you feel that these racial equity conversations are or could be like an important tool to getting more participation from students of color? Do you feel like there's a way you could expand on it? Do you feel like it's working?
Yes, yes, to all of that. I think one of the, the primary ways that we see it impacting many classrooms, we invite all the teachers to come to the meetings. And so the teachers will come into the meeting and then you'll hear that that teacher then went back to all five of their classes and started to use the protocols. They, they have the compass up on their screen as they start class. They start to talk about, you know, some of the agreements and conditions. So they're really bringing that into their classroom as part of the conversations. The students walk away and they wonder, you know, if it's not happening in their classroom, why this isn't a framework that the teacher is using and suggested as a framework? So coming out of this meeting, our charge is like, how can we make sure these conversations are happening in the classroom? Can you stick around after class and suggest that the teacher involves some of these conversations in there? So a lot of it, when the teachers come in and when the students take it back to the classroom, that's where you can see that then happening as conversations in the classroom and it becomes part of the fabric of the classrooms. The institution, you know, continues to kind of move those conversations beyond the small, you know, group of 30 students we have, you know, for each one of the classes. So we got 90 kids, you know, talking about it, but how do you make sure that continues to go on? And a lot of times it's like, hey, you can take this slide to your class, you know, and, and show it to your teacher and they're familiar with it. We've all gone through training and we should be able to bring that easily into the classroom or just feel free to say like, hey, I'm really in the feeling, you know, quadrant right now. And that's where I'm at. And here's, here's what puts me there and that kind of grounds and centers the conversation that they're having in the classroom, along the compass, for example. And that's then something that stands out to the teacher and they can work to implement that in more of the conversations they have in the classroom. So I think it kind of organically grows from there. I think there's probably structured ways to do it, but a lot of these types of things for what we're talking about here happen organically and kind of spread out from the group of students we have to the larger population.
Thank you so much and kudos to Team ASAP. It looks great.
Thank you.
I have a, I have another question. For students who are, once we, during the course of the semester, AP students who are struggling, how often do we, how often do we check in with them or it's not, is it not, is it formal? Or is it like you're saying, a little less formal? But is it targeted to students who are struggling and are in jeopardy of? Well, at this point, I mean, the, the, I mean, the expectation should be three or, three or higher. But how, how are we progress monitoring that during the course of the semester? Because sometimes triage has to be done. That's what I'm getting at, like how often checking in with them.
Yeah, so obviously the teachers are doing that with their classes all the time. The, the teachers of the classes want their students to be successful and there's a variety of, of resources that are available, you know, within the classroom and, you know, kind of right, you know, running parallel with the classroom that we have the kids involved in. But for example, we had our AP Fall Academy. The purpose of that event is to make sure that students kind of get over that initial hump. The class is hard. It might be the first AP class you ever took. How do you get over the hump? So we actually ran grade reports from the progress reports and we said, who's struggling in class? We broke that out by race and we specifically invited students to that event. And that's within the first month of school. So who's struggling early on? And how can we specifically invite those students and welcome those students into that event that we know is going to be helpful? So yes, they're getting help from their teacher. Yes, we have AM Support, Wildcat Academy, all the supports that the school offers, all the AP supports. But in addition to that, we specifically invited students who are struggling to that event. And we have grade reports that are run regularly and we take a look at those and we see, is there a course team that, you know, needs some intervention? Are there individual students that need intervention? Is it a student who's in the first time AP class? This is the only one they're taking and they're starting to struggle. You know, we also can kind of hear sometimes the student is, is considering dropping, so a teacher will reach out to us. So we can specifically work with that student and encourage them and help support them moving forward, whether that's finding them a tutor, whether that's helping them find a study group, you know, whatever that resource happens to be. But yeah, we regularly pull their grades and, you know, either, you know, to an event or to a particular support, you know, we actually are able to, to partner students up with, with places they can find success. On the math department chair, you know, one of the courses that seems to take AP for the first time is A B Calc. You know, so I have a pretty close finger on the pulse of that class. So I'm able to look at the grades of students, you know, I can break that out. You know, I can, I can look at, are there, are there students that are struggling? Are there students of color who are struggling? Are there specific supports that I need to, to set up? Is there a cohort of students that I need to bring together and kind of have some wraparound supports for? So I think we, we regularly monitor that and it's either inviting to an event or you're connecting with a specific support. So also it happens kind of organically as well, but I think we've, we've created some structures. And the easiest one to talk about is that regular grade reporting. We see the progress report grades and we can, you know, break that out, you know, in a variety of different ways to help students.
Thanks, Neil.
All right. No further questions? We'll go on. Thank you, Dale and Pete, for that very informative and important report. Thank you. Right. Okay, so the next item on the agenda is comments from the public. Dr. Beavis, do we have any comments from the public?
Yeah, yes, we do. And I will be reading those into the record. So just a moment, I'll pull them up and I will read them to everyone. All right. We have three comments from the public this evening. The first public comment is from Valerie Kimball. Dear District 202 School Board members, District administrators and virtual attendees on this meeting, I'm reaching out to you today as a concerned local pediatrician who serves the Evanston community as well as a mother of three children who attend or will attend Evanston Township High School classes of 2020, 2022 and 2025. I recognize the decision to reopen Evanston Township High School is one that requires balancing the academic needs and the safety of students, teachers and ancillary staff all at one time. I thank you for taking on the formidable task. However, based on my experience as a community-based pediatrician here in Evanston, I believe it's imperative you begin the process immediately. My practice has served Evanston and the surrounding communities for 97 years. We are located a few block, short blocks from ETHS and as a result, provide healthcare to many students in the district. My partners and I believe all children have the right to a quality personalized healthcare and as a result, provide care to families who carry no insurance, who carry government subsidized insurance and those who are privately insured. Our patient population is very representative of the diversity of the greater Evanston community. Over the past nine months, I have become extremely concerned about, one, the mental health of teenagers in District 202 and two, the increased overweight and obesity we have seen over a nine-month period of time for children from District 65 and 202. Currently, in our office, we see more children and teens for mental health consultations than we get, than we see for general sick visits, parentheses, common colds, cough, close parentheses. Our well teen visits, which in the past were often exciting discussions about school, friends and activities, are now primarily discussions about managing school from home, difficulties in staying motivated and engaged, the need for continued social interactions and the feeling of isolation, sadness and anxiousness. Many teens indicate that they have gone from, from A, from A students to just barely getting by. Some wonder if they have developed ADD as they no longer are able to focus and engage on the screen. Others indicate that they have simply become apathetic. We have run out of mental health resources for children and teens. North Shore University Hospital has a full caseload and can no longer take any new patients. Our private mental health practices have closed to new patients as well. For those who have no insurance or state insurance, there is no option. Those that may have utilized the wonderful resources of social workers, teachers and coaches at the high school are now left with no services. A virtual calming room is not a substitute for a caring social worker, teacher, coach or peer. We have more teens present with eating disorders in the last nine months than in several years. Balance in the community and drug use and overdoses has seen a tremendous increase. The pediatric emergency department around the country and in our community have risen 50% increase in emergency mental health visits. Our children and teens are screaming for our help and need some sense of normality with in-person schooling, yet District 202 continues to operate out of fear and inadequate guidance. The second grave concern we have as pediatricians is the alarming increase in obesity we have seen in our children, teens in the past nine months. Majority of our children and adolescents have gained weight far beyond the expected weight gain for their age, height and gender. At well visits, physicians, parents and our patients have been mortified to find out that they have gained 10 to 20 pounds more than they would have expected. For the most part, this is due to the increase in caloric intake and drastic decrease in physical activity. The daily movement required for a child or adolescent to get ready for school, walk to the bus or walk around campus in class all day, climb stairs at school, attend PE classes and take part in recess or other physical activities throughout the day. require a large amount of baseline calories. These are calories, uh, to burn in the natural course of an in-person school day. District 202 students are not burning those calories as they move from their bed to their kitchen, to their family room to attend school. Our students are now at home. Many with open access to refrigerator, snacks and fast food throughout the day. Many with very little supervision due to parents' needs to go to work or care for younger siblings. Eating occurs at odd hours, especially for adolescents, skip breakfast, lunch at three PM and dinner at nine PM, often on their own and a late night snack due to the dysregulated sleep schedules, which contributes to obesity. Without in-person learning and the movement required to burn these baseline calories in addition to dysregulated eating and sleeping schedules, our district adolescents are gaining weight at an alarming rate. Once the weight is gained, it is very difficult to change trajectory as an adult. Our district by its inaction to bring back in-person learning is paving a path for obesity, heart disease and long-term orthopedic complications in our community adolescents. This is occurring in most of our at-risk teens as a result of their already predisposition to many of the chronic diseases due to ethnicity or race. Throughout the greater community continues to see COVID outbreaks. I am happy to report that we have not had one outbreak of COVID nineteen as a result of school transmission in the daycares, preschools, grammar schools, middle schools or high schools that our patients attend. A majority of these patients attend private or public schools in our community or surrounding communities, most of which have returned to in-person learning in late August. Clearly it is possible to send children back to in-person learning with minimal to no transmission of COVID nineteen within the school buildings. We now have a significant amount of data documenting the safe return to school and the low risk of transmission with the school walls despite it raging outside the walls. The data has been compelling from experiences internationally, nationally and locally within Illinois and our surrounding communities. In fact, the overall majority of data points to the relative lack of transmission within school buildings with very little data suggesting in-person learning as a super spreader site. I understand the data for in-person learning in high school is limited. However, this does not suggest in-person learning is not possible for this cohort of students. As you continue to develop a plan to reopen in-person school, I ask that you utilize the more robust and the data, scientific data in regards to school reopening and school transmission. I ask that you utilize the robust medical community surrounding Emerson Township High School as well as those within the school walls. We are fortunate to have infectious disease experts, epidemiologists, frontline workers, community physicians and mental health professionals, willing and able to help guide our safe reopening. In addition, we have the Illinois chapter of the American Academy of Pediatrics, ICAAP, ready to provide science-based guidelines. ICCAP has reviewed many reopening plans for schools throughout Illinois, including those in the surrounding communities, and provide education to administrators, teachers, staff and parents. If the plan for reopening has not involved all of the above mentioned, the District 202 has not done its due diligence and has failed our children and our community. Dr. Witherspoon has spoken at town hall meeting in late summer and told all of us District 202 would not lose one child to COVID nineteen. It is very unlikely a district will lose a child to COVID nineteen directly. However, we are on the brink of losing many of our children to the downward spiral of mental illness, anxiety, depression, drug use and overdose, and suicide as a result of delayed in-person schooling. Not to mention that we have lost because, what we've lost because they have given up on education. Those children who have relied heavily on teachers, social workers and aides as their support system and their school building as their safety. Those children who may have been the first generation to graduate high school or go to college without the in-person support, without being in the building surrounded by peers, teachers, fellow athletes motivating and cheering them on, these children have given up. The actual physical building is a safe place or a shelter. For some, there is no place to go to school. Those children who are homeless in the day are forced to seek shelter and internet to attend school. They equip, uh, the equity gap has now become an equity canyon. I urge you administrators and the Board of Education District 202 to be creative and to utilize the amazing resources surrounding our district to get our children back to in-person learning. No, we will not lose a child to COVID nineteen due to the actions of District 202, but we will lose many more children in the inaction, through the inaction of District 202. Thank you for your time, respectively, Valerie A. Kimball, MD MS, Partner Physician, Chicago Area Pediatrics. Our next public comment is from Kay Sternstein. Dear District 202 Board of Education and Superintendent Witherspoon, as a resident of Evanston and a parent of a junior at ETHS, I'm growing more and more concerned about the well-being of all kids in our community and specifically the impact of prolonged school closures and e-learning on our kids. Physicians, nurses and mental health professionals in Evanston are sounding alarms as the crisis that is unfolding in front of our eyes in the practice and in their practices. In fact, two well-respected Evanston physicians presented comments to the twelve seven, two thousand twenty District sixty-five board Zoom meeting that were compelling. Link, www.youtube.com/watch v equals two H, large A, Z, large Z, X, H, capital D, capital A, W, ampersand T equals one S. They signaled grave concern for Evanston children, including our teens. Kids are suffering, their parents are suffering. This cannot be ignored and denied. Evanston parents are not surprised to hear this as we are witnessing the negative impact of prolonged e-learning on our children and hearing from our friends and neighbors about how many kids are struggling. In our own family, our junior has less enthusiasm for school, sleeps in, lays on the sofa or in bed during school. He likes his teachers a lot. However, he doesn't feel challenged and recently asked me, am I even going to be ready for college? I could not in good conscience respond in the affirmative. If I am honest, while I know that teachers are trying their best under the trying circumstances, what I am witnessing is not instill any confidence in e-learning. It is not possible substitute for face-to-face instruction. Studies, data and new art, news articles are coming out almost daily emphasizing this point as well as the harm being done to kids during this time. In addition, like most parents of high schoolers, I know we are terrified about the mental health consequences of lockdown, closed schools for our teenagers. The quieter and more withdraw our son becomes, the more concerned we are. We keep hearing, uh, of more and more Evanston teens drinking, doing drugs, being hospitalized, having panic attacks, being diagnosed with depression, even expressing suicidal ideation and harming themselves. These issues seem to be escalating and again, this is not surprising, given the clear data coming out almost daily on the consequences of prolonged school closure. You surely agree that this is terrifying. While I recognize the immense privilege our family has, having contracted and healed from COVID nineteen, being able to work from home and not suffering job loss, I worry about those families in our community that are less fortunate. It is our at-risk families, especially our black and brown families, that are being the burden of these lockdowns, shutdowns as they always borne an unfair and incomprehensible proportion of burdens of our community. Overwhelming the data and science show this to be true as well and must be acknowledged. I am emailing you specifically to ask you the following questions. One, what are the details around return to school for twenty twenty-one school year? Well, I understand that details may change. Parents and students need to know, uh, know very little about the ETHS plan. And I think sharing details, metrics is appropriate. Transparency is key. In that vein, I ask you to consider hosting a live town hall on the issues where parents and guardians are allowed to ask questions and have them answered in real time. Two, given the complexity of medical science, evidence, data coming out daily on COVID nineteen, return to school, et cetera. What clinicians, physicians, nurses, mental health professionals is the district consulting? If they're not, why not? Related, uh, three, related to two above, if you are consulting clinicians, are they of, are any of them officially on the return to school committees you have in place? If not, why not? Uh, four, related to two and three above, does the district have an official medical advisory board to consult in order to find, study, interpret all relevant science, data, evidence in order to help facilitate a return to school? If not, why not? Reopening school for face-to-face learning in addition to equity and identifying practices, policies and institutional barriers, including institutional racism and privilege, which perpetuate opportunity and achievement gaps in the district and addressing these barriers are the single most important issue for ETHS at this moment. The data, the evidence and the science show that both are inextricably linked. The longer we keep school closed, the worse the educational gaps become and the more all of our kids suffer. I believe reopening schools in a safe and equitable manner in accordance with, uh, current and ever-changing evidence, science and data is urgent for our community. But it can only be done the right way and earn the trust of the community if medical experts and professionals are advising you along the way. We are fortunate to have people in our community. They want to help you. Please take them up on their offer to assist you to create that unique ETHS solution for reopening our incredible school. Thank you so much for your time. I look forward to hearing from you. Sincerely, Kay Sternstein, uh, JD, Vice President, Advocacy Resource Center, American AMA. Finally, uh, the third public comment is from Betsy Lane. Dear Board, I appreciate all that you have done so far for kids this year. I am ready to urge you to consider sending the high school back on a hybrid schedule. Our children's mental health is affected by its continuous online learning path. Not to mention the reduced education that they are receiving will put our children behind. This is not something that we can continue. We are seeing multiple high schools going back and although there are cases of COVID nineteen that happened, we are not seeing schools as super spreaders. The benefit outweighs the risk. I'm hearing multiple parents discuss options from sending their children, uh, to give live, uh, with family members in our school district, even out of state to people considering selling their homes so that they can get into a district where the kids are going to school. We have to start listening to struggles and worries that these families are going through. At a very minimum, you should consider getting the freshmen and seniors into the school so they can at least experience something of one of, something of one of the most memorable years in high school. The freshman are not getting the introduction they need to the school nor the opportunity to meet their classmates. The seniors are being deprived of their last year of school. I urge you to find a way to give these kids back into the school year. We are seeing other districts do this successfully and I will assume, would assume Evanston can do better than most. Betsy Lane. That concludes this evening's, uh, public comment.
Thank you, Dr. Beavis. Okay, our next item is our, uh, FOIA's and I believe we have two FOIA's?
Yes, we have a FOIA from Berman and a FOIA from Johnson and they're sponsoring the packet.
Okay, thank you. All right. Um, so next we're at Board Committee Reports. And.
I guess I'll just jump in about the discipline committee. We've had, um, our first subcommittee to discuss, um, our resource officers. So the first meeting was really just to try to see where people were at. Or no, that was the second one. I'm sorry. To see where people were at and to go deeper, um, into individually how, um, the perspectives, I guess, that everyone had about this and, and how we could move forward. I would say we're at a very, very early stage of having a deeper conversation. But we do have two more meetings already scheduled for January. Um, so we're continuing to just, um, you know, have this discussion and, and figure out how we, um, come together with something or present something or, you know, whatever the outcome may be. But we are still dialoguing about it. So I guess that's, that's pretty good. And we're still having our discipline committee meetings, um, regularly as well.
Thank you. You'll keep us posted on those because it's important. That discussion is very important.
Yeah, and Pat and Jude were there also. So I don't know if you all want to add to it?
Yeah, I was, um, so it, I think it's going to be beneficial, um, to subcommittee. There seem to be a cross-section of people who are advocates for keeping the school resource officers in the building and, 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 um, and, and those who, who do not wish to see that. Um, I think we're proceeding in the right way because, um, the first action item is to gather information. And I think there were a lot of good questions asked, um, and hopefully as we become more informed, um, it'll make for, you know, good conversation that could be brought back to the board. Um, some people wanted to see, um, the MOU between the city and the district as it relates to SROs. Um, some people wanted to see, um, data on, um, interactions or arrests, um, and the demographic breakdown. So, um, I think the first step is a good step, gathering information first, um, to have a robust conversation.
Yeah, and I would just say Monique and Jude summarized it very well. Um, the one question I actually had, um, and I'm glad we talked about this to remind me, was that I think the group, the SRO Subcommittee, which is part of the discipline committee, um, is planning some kind of a report back or something? It sounded, I think it was February Jude or Monique, does that ring a bell? And I was just wondering what kind of, if there is a process from, from that subcommittee forward? Um, or if we're kind of building it as we go? Um, and so I was just curious if there's some kind of plan, because there was a date mentioned in terms of making some kind of a recommendation or getting back to someone. And I, I guess I'm just curious if that process exists, what it is, and if it's still being built, then that's fine too.
I'm not quite clear on that, but I, I think that is something that needs to be, um, discussed, like what's the clear objective and like what's the next step after whatever comes out of, um, whatever findings or uh, information comes out of that subcommittee, what, what's the next step after that? I, I'm not, I'm not totally clear on that either.
Uh, normally when there's a committee or a subcommittee, they determine, because they're the ones actually meeting, uh, you know, what their goals are, what outcomes they're looking for. And, and so I would imagine that that'll have to come out of, of your subcommittee as you continue to meet.
Yeah, I think so. And I, I know, um, you know, Dr. Robinson hasn't been there. We're, we're thinking about him, right? And so I know he's been the convener and the leader and, and he sets the temple. So, um, I, I am more concerned about getting it right than getting it done quickly, right? So I, I heard the, you know, the next two meetings and then, um, February, I think you're right, Pat, about coming up with something in February. I think we need to just be thoughtful in whatever we do and whatever we recommend or whatever we bring forward to the board, um, and whatever those decisions are. So we can just do what's best for our students and for the community, the school community. Um, so I think that will come out. I mean, I, I think it will reveal itself because we're not there yet. And, and people, people have a lot to say. People have a lot to say. And so we're allowing space for, for people to really, um, be in a safe environment to say what, what's really in their heart. So we'll get there. We'll get there.
I appreciate that because I agree with you. It is really important for this conversation to happen and for this, this, this matter to be well thought and considered and, and all perspectives heard. That's important. This is, this is a big deal. So, um, thank you. Thank you for that report, all of you. Um, are there other reports? If not, I want to talk a little bit about the, um, Illinois Association of School Boards, uh, twenty twenty delegate assembly that was held, uh, in November. I believe it was November fourteenth. There was an assembly held and, um, there were several resolutions presented to, um, the delegate assembly. Um, one that, that was presented was the resolution to strengthen, uh, gun storage laws. Um, and, uh, that resolution actually would have, um, would have made, uh, this, the gun storage laws more rigid if, uh, children under eighteen were in the home. Um, as it stands now, uh, it's, it starts at age twelve and the, the hope was to increase, uh, that storage mandate to age eighteen. And, um, and it was, it was a lot, there was a lot of discussion and in the end, um, the resolution did not pass. It's going to remain at twelve. Um, and, um, it was a very interesting process to hear so many, uh, people from different parts of the state speak about this. I, I've been there before and, and, um, it's really different to, to hear some of the school board members in some of the other communities uh, talk about, um, their feelings about, um, weapons and uh, what happens in their community. So, um, but that's the position of the delegate assembly from this year. And there were other resolutions available and I think you all got a summary of those. Um, I think that's probably the most, uh, important one, at least for us. But feel free to ask questions if you want. Okay. Um, so we're at, uh, superintendent's report, Dr. Witherspoon.
Yeah, thank you. Uh, so I want to begin by, uh, celebrating Dr. Marcus Campbell. Uh, he was a recipient of this year's, uh, Service in Education Award. He was a recipient of this year's Service and Education Award by our own Evanston Northshore N double A, N A C P. And it was at a banquet held just recently, the 56th Annual Chapter Freedom Fund Banquet. And Marcus, congratulations. That, that's, that's a great award to win and well deserved. Also, we, we have achieved the, what's called Silver Level We Compost. That's how they named their award. But this is the Illinois Food Scrap Coalition that partners in our composting efforts. And it's the Waste Division Subcommittee of ETHS, a Sustainability Advisory Committee that has really started this project. It was started last year, started composting in our South Study Cafe. And thanks to lots of students' efforts as well as adults in our nutrition services, we had a lot of success in that. It takes a lot of, of training, a lot of on-hand assistance every day to help our students learn what can be composted and what can't and, and where you properly dispose of things. But it's really going well. And we, we, we were composting in, in tens of pounds of poundage of composting. And so anyway, we, we've received this recognition and we're real pleased with it. And we hope, I, I believe the next level is, is gold level. And we think that we can achieve the gold in another year because we intend to be expanding our composting efforts in the school. The ETHS Gift Drive that our Community Service Club led raised $1,600 as well as collected over 70 items, including toys and warm clothes and backpacks and gift cards. So that gift drive was very successful this year. The next E-Town Live that Dr. Campbell and I will be doing will be this Friday morning, December 18th at 8 o'clock a.m. And then the, the one after that will be after we return from the holidays on Friday, January the 8th. Want to just remind your students and families to be checking your email and, and paying attention to information you will be receiving about returning materials from first semester that you no longer need. As you know, some of our courses are semester-long, others are year-long, but we will be collecting the materials that, that students are done with per seconds from first semester. And our students and families are pretty familiar with how we distributed materials at the beginning of first semester and they will, all be receiving information as well about that distribution. So I just want to give everybody a heads up, be paying attention because it, it takes quite a bit of mobilization, but we do get it done. And finally, winter break will be December 20th through January 3rd. And we will close for the winter holidays at 4 o'clock this Friday, December 18th. And that concludes my report.
Thank you. Thank you, Dr. Witherspoon. Okay, we are at the Audit Committee. It's an audit committee for fiscal year 2020, though it's a comprehensive annual report. And we got some information on that report.
I'm just going to quickly introduce Mary Brodino and Kendra Williams, who are our CFO and Deputy CFO. Of course, we do receive, the Board receives annually the audit report, the comprehensive annual financial report. I'll just steal their headlines because I think it's important and, and I just want to give them and everybody involved in this a, a great shout out. We received an unmodified audit opinion. That is the highest opinion you can get. That means we had a clean audit and we have ended this past fiscal year truly financially solid. And that's really what you're going to hear tonight. And it's just, it's a pleasure when we, when we know that you can receive audit reports like this. So Mary and Kendra, I'm going to turn it over to you.
Thank you. Thanks, Eric. Good evening, Board. It's nice to bring you some good news. It's, there's been so much uncertainty, at least we're certain on what we can tell you about the audit tonight. So you can see Kendra's with us and we're going to go through just, we, we have seven slides, so it's not a lot. I'm going to share my screen and Kendra is going to start by going through the first few slides and then I'll just finish up. So I will turn it over to you, Kendra.
All right. So we're going to be going over the, the audit that happened for fiscal year 20, so that would be the audit that ended June, sorry, June 30th, 2020. Just to have that frame of reference for, for our fiscal year. And so as Dr. Witherspoon mentioned, we did receive an unmodified audit opinion, which is positive and exactly what we would be going for. So we're, we're happy to say that for our audit. We were able to meet with the Audit Committee last week on December 8th. That meeting went over an hour. So like Mary said, fortunately, we're only doing seven slides tonight. We're not going to go that long with you guys. But we were able to really dig into, you know, some highlights of the financials and other important information there. And, and that went well. And we were able to also talk about how there were no significant deficiencies or material weaknesses this year, which is also a, a positive of the audit. As always, the auditors were able to provide constructive feedback on how we can make improvements in our control processes, they, which they always do and which we expect, but we did not have any significant deficiencies or material weaknesses. And so when it comes to, we already touched on, you know, that we ended financially stable. There were increases in revenues and expenses in FY 20 in comparison to FY 19. So when it comes to overall revenues, we had revenues of 119.5 million in FY 20 in comparison to 111 in FY 19. And when it comes to expenses, they were up to 118 million versus 113 million from last year. So just to give you a, a frame of reference when we say a moderate increase in revenues and expenses, what we're referring to. But we were able to complete a 2 million plan transfer as well. And the increase in property tax revenue is what really kind of contributed to that increased revenue that I mentioned before. And there are also reductions in certain expenditures due, due to COVID-19, which allowed for a surplus of 1.4 million.
Kendra, just, I just, sorry. I just wanted to mention that the $2 million plan transfer that you mentioned was into the Capital Improvements Fund, which we discussed earlier. Well, this would have been, we discussed that a year ago in the fall, to help us get some headway on some of the infrastructure needs of the building, the windows, the tuck pointing and masonry. So we were hoping to be able to do that transfer and the financials were in good conditions so that budgeted and planned transfer was able to be done to capital.
Okay. And so, no, next. Thank you, Mary. Okay. And so for the Education Fund, we had a $3.4 million surplus. And so when you take the General Fund and include that 2 million plan transfer, there was, we were able to increase by approximately 1.5 million, the, the General Fund.
Kendra, if I can just kind of stress here what I just mentioned, the $2 million was a budgeted transfer, but when we talked about the 1920 budget with the Board as well as the capital projects, we waited until the end of fiscal 20 to make that plan transfer because if, you know, if expenses had been unexpectedly higher, you know, needed repairs that weren't planned for or anything in that nature, we wanted to make sure that we waited until the financials were really, you know, down to the end to make sure that we could sustain that transfer. And so that, when Kendra mentions the $3.4 million surplus, that really didn't take into consideration that 2 million of that was planned to be transferred. So the good news was that we could make that transfer, which is what brought us down to approximately 1.5 or nearly 1.5 million. Thanks, Kendra.
And so it's still delving more into the capital, capital improvements. So we had a large amount of capital spending this year. We were able to add capital assets of approximately $3.5 million this year. And so we were able to add things like the weight and cardio room, the district PA system and the upstairs theater. And we still have more projects that we were working on that were in progress at 630, 20, like locker rooms, auditorium upgrades and outdoor track. So those are kind of some of the highlights. I know that oftentimes we're discussing these capital projects with the Board. And so just being able to see them get completed is great, but we, I don't want to run ahead, but we, we oftentimes have to just keep in mind that, that when it comes to the capital projects and doing those transfers, it's necessary just because we are always trying to keep up with what we're facing with the building and that, you know, depreciation is happening at a much quicker pace than what we're able to spend on capital projects.
Well, you stole my thunder, but the Board hears me say that every year, so it wouldn't be a surprise. I was just going to talk about the next couple of slides. We just have, I think, two more. But I will say, we did not do separate slides for each of the funds like we sometimes do during budget time, but the other funds also had good returns this year. I think off the top of my head, the Operations and Maintenance Fund had a surplus of between 500 and 600,000. We attribute that to some lower spending with the school year finished, finishing in remote. So the, the Transportation Fund, the debt, our bond and interest fund, they all had expected returns. And so we really just come to you and talk about the results mainly from the Education Fund because it's by far our largest fund. But I just wanted to kind of, as a side note, let you know that the other funds also performed well this year. So just in talking about debt and, and how it relates to capital, but mainly about debt, the, we were able, the district was able to reduce debt overall by 1.7 million dollars. We paid off some old debt, which will then open up some capability in the future for us to finance future capital projects. And IMRF is also considered in our long-term debt as, as well as a portion of TRS, but the TRS is really an in and out that's funded by the state. But IMRF really, our liability on that depends on how the, the fund does as a whole in its return. So it, it's very well-funded and it's not anything to, to worry about at all, but it does factor into some of our financial numbers and it's a bit beyond our control. As Kendra mentioned, the capital needs outpace the available funds. Every year we talk about the number that was calculated as depreciation on our capital, on our infrastructure. And it's important to try to at least keep up with that number. That number's usually around 3.6 to 3.8 million dollars. We do have a hard time keeping up with that kind of capital replacement every year. So that's why we do these transfers. We've done transfers from the Operations and Maintenance Fund. We've done transfers from working cash. And it's really a way, as long as the funds are in healthy shape, it's really a way to help subsidize our capital program, especially now while we're needing big projects like windows and roofs and masonry. And so it's really a way that the, that we are able to use money within the district, not add additional financing and try to, you know, we can't go above our debt limits anyway. So that, it's important that we're able to do those transfers as, as we see fit and as we bring to the Board.
I'll even, I'll even add just a little bit, Mary. It, it actually has a lot to do with maintaining our earning and maintaining our AAA bond rating. Because if, if you can't keep up with your depreciation and your liabilities keep growing, this is, this is bottom-line stuff that rating agencies look at. And, and clearly if you're mortgaging the future and you're not keeping up with your facility, but it's clear that it's depreciating and, and, and things need to be done, they really do factor that in. So it's not only important for all the reasons Mary said, but to maintain that AAA bond rating and, and get those favorable rates when we do have to go out and bond, it's really vital that we do this.
Thanks, Eric. Definitely an important aspect that always reflects well on us because I think we have a conservative approach to keeping up with capital and not always trying to look to borrow to fund it. So our last slide is really just talking about continued threats. And we always have some information for you on what we perceive as threats in this year, certainly COVID-19 and how that will affect us in the long run. We know that there is, is some state funding in jeopardy. So I would say this is one of the biggest unknowns at this point. We know that we're one of the, what's called Tier Four districts for evidence-based funding. We know that the state is going to have trouble meeting those obligations, especially with the Fair Tax that didn't pass in the fall. So we are, we are really expecting that our evidence-based funding could, you know, dry up. I mean, best case would be that it would stay the same. So we know that that will be an issue. We also know that there's going to be some discussion, as there has been in the past, about property tax freezes. We don't know where the Consumer Price Index will come in, so we don't know, you know, how much money that would mean that we would lose, but we know that that's a big factor. And we also know that a lot of people are going, I, a lot of people are going to be filing property tax appeals. I got a probably a steady flow of four or five emails from the county just this afternoon. And, and each email said, "We've been made aware that we failed to let the taxing bodies know about these tax appeals." And these are large commercial tax appeals. And I think I got four or five of them in a row. So I had to forward those on, you know, to our attorneys who help us fight these appeals. And we partner with District 65 on this. And the city must have gotten the same, the same letters because the city emailed District 65 and myself asking, you know, how we try to defend these property tax appeals. So we know that's going to happen, probably even more so in light of everything that's happened this year. And then lastly, the continued deterioration of TRS along with, you know, the deterioration of state funding. TRS is grossly underfunded. I think the latest number I heard was somewhere around 35%. And so we've been, I know we sound like a broken record when Eric and I have mentioned this before, but, you know, something's got to give. And I think for the last couple of years, there was a thought that the Fair Tax might, you know, pull out some of that funding and, and help with this situation. But I, I think that we'll be hearing about the pension shift. I don't know that that could come along hand-in-hand with the property tax freeze. I'm not sure, but these are just things that we continue to listen for and watch for because we know that they are still very real threats for us. And that's it. So I don't know if anyone has any questions or comments, but I will stop sharing my screen. And we're back.
Thank you. Thank you, Mary. Thank you, Kendra. Great reports.
Thanks.
For the most part, good news until you got to that last slide, Mary.
And in your, in your packet, there were four things, a memo from us, the actual full document, and then two letters from our auditors. One, as Kendra mentioned, is always guidance on how we can improve our processes. And the other one is kind of a standard auditing letter that's required. So that's what was in your packet. So thanks, Pat. We always have to give that one last slide.
To go ahead, round it back and to end on a, on a good note, we will say that we're quite pleased that we were able to end this year so financially stable and in such a good position because with not knowing what's coming forward, you know, it was really, it was really good to be able to end on a good foot. So we're happy about that.
Yeah, you're absolutely right. You're absolutely right. Okay, Gretchen.
Yeah, hang on. Am I unmuted? Yeah, sorry. Mary or Kendra, can you elaborate a little bit more on the items in the management letter? In particular, the, the section titled Cash Account Reconciliation? And explain, are we implementing? I, I see the recommendation to implement a monthly procedure to ensure total cash investments in the cash and investment accounts, reconciles, et cetera, et cetera. So are we? So are we now doing that? Because it's surprising to me that we wouldn't have been doing that previously.
Yes, we are doing that. We have several different accounts that we reconcile on a monthly basis. We have an investment account that doesn't see very much activity at all that we were booking on an annual basis. And so that's the one that they were recommending, that we move that one to being a monthly account. And so we're implementing that.
And how about the cash account one? That's separate from the investment account? Is that, am I reading this right?
Hang on one second. I'm just relooking at the actual wording. Kendra, I don't know if you have in front of you, it says monthly cash and investment account should be formally reconciled to the general ledger, implement a monthly procedure to ensure total cash. I mean, they weren't singling out specifically a cash account. They kind of lumped the terms together, cash and investments. Kendra mentioned a specific investment. I'm sorry, Gretchen, I didn't mean to talk over you.
No, no, no. Sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt either. Yeah, I'm not sure what the reference is.
Yeah, I don't want you to think that there was some, like, unreconciled cash sitting around. That wasn't the case. Sometimes there are some reconciling items at the end of the month, and so they always recommend, you know, figuring out what those items are. Usually, it's kind of a timing issue, but there certainly weren't any cash accounts sitting around unreconciled. But I will say that auditors, when they mention investments, it's cash and investments, like that's a term.
Got it, got it.
So, yeah. I don't know, Kendra, was there any? I don't think there's anything else, but Kendra, I didn't want to stop you if there was something you wanted to add.
No, there isn't. And then that was, I mean, and so when Mary mentioned about the timing, that also was lumped in there. And so, in that, we have certain things that are due in June, and so we book them on our books in June. And they made the recommendation that we hit a liability account for them if they're not going to actually be pulled out of our account by, until, let's say, July 3rd. And so that was another recommendation that came up, you know, because of the timing of those few days.
Got it. So that's not the withdrawal and transit section?
Oh, no, that is.
Oh, is that what you were talking about? That's the withdrawal and transit?
Mm-hmm.
Sorry, I don't know all these terms. So you've made that change as well?
Yes.
Yeah, and I would say just in general, every year, we learn a little bit more about how to just try to be as concise and timely as possible. And so I think we take these points from them as constructive criticism, and, you know, there never are difficulties during the audit. It's more of a learning experience for us, especially since they have different staff that roll into the audit every year.
Yeah, I get it. So, and then the last one that I know about, the issue we had with sort of hacking emails, but then the last one was the IMRF contribution rate change. And that sounds like just a one-off that we somehow missed the change in the rate.
Yeah, and I would say honestly, you know, we have had some turnover in our payroll department, and so it was a minor change that the payroll person made as a matter of course, and that was one of the tasks that didn't get passed on. So as Kendra pointed out in our committee meeting, the employees portion was deducted and remitted correctly. Our employer portion was also remitted correctly, but how much expense we reflected on each payroll was not exactly correct because the percentage had gone, it could go from, you know, 6.2 to 6.5%. But over the course of the year, it added up to enough to be material for them to point out. Everything was remitted, employees were deducted, and the money was paid properly. It was really an expense on the books that they had to help us catch up at the end of the year, and so they needed to list it.
Right. I just wanted a little clarity because the letter itself is always a little opaque.
Agreed.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Comments, questions from the board about the audit? From the committee? Stephanie, Jude?
All right.
They explained it a lot better than I can.
Okay.
Well, and I just want to thank Jude and Stephanie for doing the deeper dive that helps all of us, and of course, Mary and Kendra and everyone who works on this. Because again, ending the year with a budget surplus is not an easy thing to do any year, let alone this year. So just once again, the outstanding work of our administration, and particularly Mary, Kendra, and their folks. So thanks to all of you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you for bringing us back to Kendra, that you want us to end up on a high so that we don't.
She's much younger and more optimistic than me.
Well, yes, so we don't know what's lurking around the curve, but at least we know where we are today. So that's good. We're in a good place. Okay. All right, let's move on. Item number 12, Items for Action. The first item is Approval of the 2020 Tax Levy. And there's a memo attached to that. Can we have a motion, please?
So moved.
And second?
Second.
All right, roll call, please.
Laude?
Yes.
Livingston?
Yes.
Manzel?
Yes.
Parsons?
Yes.
Rolowitz?
Yes.
The Cherage?
Yes.
Savage Williams?
Yes. Thank you. The next item is Acceptance of Fiscal Year 20 Audit Report, the report we just heard. We have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Livingston?
Yes.
Manzel?
Yes.
Parsons?
Yes.
Rolowitz?
Yes.
The Cherage?
Yes.
Laude?
Yes.
Savage Williams?
Yes. Okay, the next item is the Consent Agenda, which consists of Approval of Minutes from November 9th, 2020 Closed Session Meeting, November 9th, 2020 Regular Meeting, Treasurers' Report from October 2020, Approval of Bills, Personnel Agenda, Appointments to Staff, Support Staff, Change in Status, Educational Overloads, Stipends, Leaves of Absence from Support Staff and Certified Maternity, and Release of Support Staff. Can we have a motion, please?
I can make that motion, but I'd like to remove one item from the list of bills. And with that change, I would make the motion. And then the item I'd like removed is the line on the bill list related to the vendor And I move approval of the rest of the consent agenda, including the bill list minus U-line.
And I'll assume, all right, can we have a second? There's a motion on the table.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Manzel?
Yes.
Parsons?
Yes.
Rolowitz?
Yes.
The Cherage?
Yes.
Laude?
Yes.
Livingston?
Yes.
Savage Williams?
Yes. All right. So now we need to have a discussion about U-line.
Well, if somebody else wants to move just the U-line bill, that's fine.
Yeah, it's just the one item that we need to.
Right.
Can we have a motion, please?
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
Roll call, please.
Parsons?
Yes.
Rolowitz?
Yes.
The Cherage?
Yes.
Laude?
Yes.
Livingston?
No.
Manzel?
Yes.
Savage Williams?
Yes. Okay, thank you. All right. So we are at Old and New Businesses. Anybody have old or new business to present? Hearing none. Before we close, I just want to make sure that everybody knows, everybody stays safe. This is our last time that we will gather formally this calendar year. So have a great and restful and safe winter break. Check on those you love. Take care of yourselves, and I'll see you in 2021. Can we have a motion? Motion for adjournment?
Usually, I jump all over it, so I guess I'll move.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Happy New Year, happy holidays.
Happy New Year.
Take care. Bye.